October 26th, House of Representatives called. Would you please stand with the pledge of allegiance and on the other side?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Welcome to the COVID mask-wearing council meeting. I'm not wearing a mask.
We're socially distanced.
Yes, we're socially distanced.
There you go.
All right, first item on the agenda will be approval of amendments in the October 12th meeting.
Move to approve the amendments from October 12th, 2020.
Second.
Is the move in second to approve the amendments in the October 12th meeting with the clerk, please call.
Schreiber?
Yes.
Stites?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Khar?
Yes.
Malat?
Yes.
Okay, next item on the agenda will be statement of bills paid in amount of $160,544.67.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion. We approve the statement of bills for $160,544.67.
Second.
It has been moved in second to approve the statement of bills paid in the amount of $160,544.67. Would the clerk please call a roll?
Schreiber?
Yes.
Stites?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Khar?
Yes.
Malat?
Yes.
Next item on the agenda will be request your comments and those others. After being done, we'll move on to the next item. Consider authorizing the city manager to enter into contract negotiation with KC Disposal related to 2021 city solid waste and recycling agreement.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, before you, is request for authorization with city manager to begin formal negotiations for our 2021 solid waste and recycling contract with KC Disposal. We try to keep you updated as to our review process over the last two city council meetings, kind of letting you know what our scope of review was, what were going to be the factors that we are considering in selecting a firm to move forward with the formal negotiations. There's some information included in your agenda packet related to the general pricing for the base level of service that were requested from all of the firms. We won't know for sure. We'll come back later at the normal time at the last meeting of the month to do any rate adjustments that need to be done as a relation to this contract. Right now, some cost control is kind of a primary area of focus that we are looking at and we're wanting to keep those, if there are going to be any increase or any changes to the, or adjustments to those monthly costs, we should say, we want to keep those minimal and we think that we've done that and we can, with the level of service that we will be discussing with KC Disposal, keep it at to a less than a 1% decrease to the residents. And somewhere between the, right now, you're charged 1812 per month. We're not anticipating that with the level of service that were included, that that would be increased anywhere more than 1825 per month. With that, with the service levels that we requested price bids for, the only real change, because the feedback that we got from this body and from the community survey was that by and large, people enjoyed the service levels as they were, weekly recycling and 55-gallon containers, weekly trash pickup and 95-gallon containers. The direction we got from this group was that we wanted to continue to have a focus on the citywide cleanup, which is still in here. But within the costs that were submitted, we did, you know, after we kind of crushed some of the numbers, then we were able to play around with it for a little bit. It's essentially a one-to-one reproduction of the current service level that we have. The only difference is the addition of a fall cleanup of curbside thing, but similar to what we're doing now, captured within that estimated cost increase that I addressed earlier. So it's pretty minimal, like I said, less than a 1% cost increase, but just offering an additional bulky, large item pickup option for the residents who were, for whatever reason, couldn't take advantage of citywide cleanup. So essentially offering two options throughout the year to get rid of those kind of materials and to hopefully prevent legal dumping and dumping in the river and things of that nature. Some folks from KC Disposal are here, if you've got questions with them specifically. But right now, the request is to authorize city manager to enter into those negotiations and we'll come back with a final contract or final approval once we kind of whittle all these details down. By and large, that's the scope that you can expect to see, let's come back for a full contract.
Would you, gentlemen, please introduce yourselves just for the council.
Yeah, so I'm Matt Gibson.
This is Vince Garrett.
Yeah, I'm Vince Garrett.
And they are co-owners of the company, correct?
Yes, sir.
And aren't they here in Edwardsville?
Yes, ma'am.
I think that's fantastic.
Did the, oh, I'm sorry.
No, you go ahead.
Did the local home end up?
So we're still working on, right now, the last that we updated, it sounds that they were amenable to it. We're having a little trouble connecting. I think they're in between some management folks, so they're, while they're getting people installed, but the last indication that I've got is that they are still on board with exploring as an option, which we would definitely know by the time we bring this back for final contract approval. And if they were to get added into it, there may be a, the possibility of some minor price decreases based on that additional volume. We won't know for sure until we kind of crush all the numbers and see exactly what kind of pricing structure the local home park will be comfortable with if they want to go back to that.
Thank you. Sorry, Carolyn.
No, that's okay. I think we're, they've been around with about the same base.
What cities or councils with the same, similar number of employees, do they serve at present time?
I'll go ahead and let the.
Great question. So we actually have.
Would you go ahead and just write the address, please?
Sorry, what'd you say?
Your name and address.
Oh, no, my name is Matt Gibson, CEO of KC Disposal. Our address is 10011 Woodin Road, Edwardsville, Kansas 66111. To answer your question, Mr. Councilmember, we have quite a few HOAs that we have been acquiring. So the closest one, I would say, to the amount is going to be Wedgewood HOA that we just contracted with. We start them December 11th. We do have, I think, about 13 other HOAs that we do service currently. They all range in residents, you know, anywhere from 27 up to that 448 that Wedgewood is. So we have 20, over 23,000 residential customers currently. At the end of this year, with adding the city and the HOAs will be over 25,000 residential customers. So I think we can definitely handle the volume and we're right here, so not too far away.
Are you serving any of the commercial clients here in town at present time?
We do not, currently.
And you stop their business or?
We have not. We have just started really ramping up our commercial as we're really focused more on the residential side of things. That's kind of our bread and butter. We're just now getting into the commercial space. We do have a lot of dumpsters on hand and we can't handle commercial. We do have about four trucks right now for commercial. We can add more to our fleet if need be, so we can definitely handle commercials.
Do you guys have any of the larger, I'm gonna call them roll-off dumpsters, you know, when people are doing a remodel at their house or something that they can use? You know, you drop it off for a week or two weeks.
Yeah.
But you do. I tell you what I would, and Zach, where, yeah, when you're guys' negotiations and talk, I would like to see that Edwardsville citizens would get some sort of a discount to utilize one of those roll-off dumpsters. I think that that would help us, and I'm not advocating for free.
Yes.
Or, but you know, something as a perk as an Edwardsville citizen to use you versus someone else. And I think that'd go a long way, that'd help us out. And also, I will say, thank you guys, because Edwardsville, I'm always asking that we get my end-of-county business at a minimum and love to get Edwardsville business. And obviously, you guys are both. And I like it.
Absolutely.
Fully have my support.
We appreciate that. And I like your idea of giving a discount, excuse me. We currently do that with our current customers, so roll-off is one price for a noncustomer and discounted for our current customer. So I like the way you have that.
Thank you. What size of recycling container are we using presently?
65-gallon right now.
Okay, it'd be the same size?
Yes, sir.
A person can, so one of the questions that was raised was additional garbage or severance. So part of the discussion would be, so if somebody wanted to get a second container, it would be an additional $5 charge. If they want to upgrade from 65 to 95, I believe that is a $5 dollar charge. So that's an option. If somebody wants to have a large recycling container that can cycle that much, it's great, but there is a charge of that. Or if somebody said, I've got so much trash on a regular basis, I want to have an additional 95-gallon container for garbage, that's an option that's there for anybody to choose.
And do you have, also have the yard and yard and a half pickup dumpsters that you service weekly or bi-weekly or?
Talking about commercial dumpsters, like, yes, we do have commercial dumpsters.
Because there are a few that people can, that have those, that would like, there are residents that have those.
Yes.
So I would be one of them, they're reaching out to you about that.
Absolutely.
And those would be, continue to be contracts between those addresses and the firm? So that market's still kind of open right now, but they, it sounds like they'll be on.
Great, thank you.
From a logistical standpoint, how do you change from one company to another with the trashcans and recycling bins and all that stuff?
So great question. What we've seen in the past, of course, is our first city, guys, and thank you very much if this does go through. But the transitions with HOAs are pretty seamless. So pretty much the current provider would pick up the containers on the last pickup day and we would be dropping off the containers usually that same day. With 1,100 residents, we should be able to do that in one day. We would set for two days, just to make sure in case we forget some stragglers and things like that, but it shouldn't be a problem. Our staging is right here, so we're able just to show them out pretty quickly. So we should be able to get it done in one day. I can't speak for the current provider how quickly they can get them picked up, but we have seen that they are pretty quick.
I make a motion to authorize city manager to enter into a contract negotiation with KC Disposal related to the 2021 city solid waste and recycling agreement.
It has been moved in second to authorize the city manager to enter into a contract negotiation with KC Disposal related to the 2021 city solid waste and recycling agreement.
Mayor, I'd like to make one comment to procure the record here. So it was mentioned that the Wedgewood HOA was a recent takeover. Just for note, I live within that HOA. I was not at party to those negotiations, did not participate in that, just for record. I do live in that, that particular HOA. They are the new contracted body. I serve on that board of directors. I abstain from all participations in the vote at that location.
Okay. Thank you, Mike. Anyway, would the clerk please call a roll?
Schreiber?
Yes.
Stites?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Khar?
Yes.
Malat?
Yes.
Thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate it.
Thank you, absolutely.
Next item on the agenda will be consider recommendation of approval from the CPBC Board, CCPPS Board, ordinance number 1033, naming the city code related to special events.
Yes, sir. This recommendation came out of the Senateary Parts of Public Spaces Board and really, it's not really driven by any one particular issue or any, anything that's come up that has caused any kind of complication. But really, it started when last year, the fire department, so typically this body will consider special events, applications to approve and review and all that. The fire department came forward last year with a trans, a fire truck staging event at a private resident, or a private business, and that time we started kicking the tires on the current code language, trying to make sure what was, to see if it was clear what was and what was not considered a special event that someone were actually coming to make applications for. So the CPPS took this on and the last, their last two meetings kind of reviewed some of this language. We had the city attorney and city manager providing additional input as well. Really, this doesn't change any of the existing language or existing fee schedule associated with it, or the review and approval process that this board is already used to. All it does is adds in definition as to what is considered a special event and would be considered necessary to go through the council review and approval process.
I have some questions and concerns on it. I completely understand anything that has the temporary closure of a street. I think that's, city streets could affect emergency response. But a neighborhood garage sale or an event on a private property, a church fundraising, funeral processions would be included, the family having a kickball tournament with people watching it on the sidelines. I feel like there isn't really a necessity for those folks to have to go to the government and ask permission to do those things. I think it might be a little too generic, a little too far-reaching. I would be fine with keeping the street closures on there, but I feel like a lot of the other stuff, besides maybe the, even the, like, processions, I don't, I don't think a funeral procession would necessarily need that, maybe a parade. But I think, I think a lot of it's just a little too extensive.
I think when you put in wording that says, in number seven, that says ceremony, I mean, is a ceremony a 50th wedding anniversary? And I don't think that I need to go to the government to ask if I can have a ceremony for my parents' 50th wedding anniversary.
Right.
I'm gonna have it on my, my area, my property. And if, I mean, there's folks that have annual parties in our city all of the time.
Right.
Well, once a year. That's the word, annual. But I'm saying I don't, I'm not, I'm not for restricting people to have to do another step. So I am, and we currently have a, about street closures, that's currently in there now. And so I am of the opinion that we make no change to it whatsoever.
I will tell you that we've had, we've had issues where president was alcohol involved or, I mean, I think they're really, where somebody wants to throw a big Fourth of July party, where they're selling alcohol, which is permissible in law unless they have special prevent for them. So if they want to have alcohol at an event, as I understand it, she can probably clarify it better, but, but the law that was changed allows those things with a special prevent. That's really how we got this started to begin with. And when you're abusing the public street. So if you want to have a parade down your town and you're gonna have, you know, have roads closed and use of lease resources and things like that. So, I mean, I think the intent here was to try to clarify, so it's so broad right now that pretty much everything ends up being almost a special event. And in many of these cases, maybe it shouldn't be something that has to come back before the council, or even as an administrator. I think that's the intent.
Yeah, it is.
If it needs an additional work, then, you know, but I think the intent is to say there are circumstances, we want to make sure we understand the definition of those circumstances. So, you know, we can say, yes, that is, or no, it isn't. So right now that the fault is, yes, it is, it meets, you know, pretty minimal standard.
And I'm kind of of the opposite mindset where I would rather it just be fault, we know it isn't, unless it's closing a street or maybe selling alcohol, if that's, but those are already in our code. So I don't really understand why we would expect people, if they're having a party at their own house, and not closing a street and not selling alcohol to get a special permit.
And I'm playing devil's advocate.
Sure.
So 300 people show up at somebody's house and their car is parked all over the sides of roads and there's alcohol and there's no events.
Yeah, that happens all the time. And you know what? And then you handle it. I mean, that's what we have a police department for. I've responded on many of those calls where they're parking illegally. You go handle it. I mean, people have 300 people at their residence, fine, that's my residence, so I want 120 or 500, that's how many I'll have. And if I'm not breaking any laws, so be it. But if I am, then you handle it according to, that's what you have, police, police allow.
And again, I'm, I'm, I think the intent here is though, is to try to address those before they become an issue, so.
We have, by having laws put in place. We have already addressed those, by having laws put in place. That says you can't park on the street, you can't block the street, you can't serve minors alcohol, you can't do all those things. Those are in place already. I'm not, I'm not.
And again, I think the intent is to try to make sure there's a working relationship for large events like that happen. That's where they need to, not to prohibit them, but so that, I mean, it'd be much better not to have those problems.
Well, I would be okay if you said maybe put a number on it, then. If you've got, I'm gonna say 500, I don't know what you guys want to put. But you know what? If I have a ceremony at my house and there's 25 people, does that constitute needing this?
I didn't think that was the focus. Now, I'm just reading this as you are here. But, so for example, we're under business regulations and the way I see.
Word that up.
So if you start with what the entire chapter is about, the business regulations, and I'm sorry if I'm muddling through this a little bit. But as I'm, as I'm reading here, and I'm trying to think of, because I don't have that firm either, the old one, but I'm trying to think of, if I want to throw a, a, a party on my property and I'm going to use fireworks and I want to charge a, something at the gate, for example, a fundraiser, okay, so you're gonna have this kind of money-making kind of event. I, I thought the focus of this kind of stuff was to then say, okay, it'll be properly sanctioned and that fireworks, you need a permit or at least approval of some sort, right? It's not the Fourth of July week, right? So that's what I would say triggers that, just in a general example, is that you would then come forward to the city and say, I'm having this event, we'll be parking on this property, we expect 200 people, we'll have fireworks and we're raising money at the gate, for example, that that would be. Now, the rest of this really applies to public property and the obstruction or impeding of some sort of traffic. So when we talk about, like, you're gonna have a wedding ceremony or something at your house, I don't think that's where this needed to apply.
I think so, but. I mean, how do you, by reading this, how do you say that it's not?
Specifically in section five, it says entertainment event and organized event having its primary purpose, the entertainment or amusement of a group of people, including but not limited to carnivals, festivals, fireworks displays, fairs, concerts on public or private property within city limits. And so it doesn't really say, they have, they, if they're selling alcohol, it's safe, they're charging admission. There's a separate one for fundraising and that is, sorry, guys, I have to bring it. Six, non-commercial event fundraising or non-commercial events sponsored by nonprofit groups or nonprofit organizations. So I'm thinking the church up the street has an annual Christmas bazaar where they, last year they tried to make some money to put a roof on. I don't think they should have to come to the city to get permission to do that.
And I don't think that's the intent.
Right. So I just think this is probably.
It sounds like they need to go back to that board of directors.
Right.
I agree. I could say in those scenarios, that's not the way we're doing business today. I think this just adds some language that's a little maybe vague and causes some of those questions. But in that scenario, in our, my opinion, that's not the way the city would want you. But if you were gonna have a Ferris wheel at the community center parking lot and you wanted to have that event individually, you would come to the city and get a special event permit. And so that, that's how that would look.
I think really, but based on the discussions at the CPPS Board, really the trigger point was, is it, using the example that you had about the church, you know, by and large, that is an event for their membership and in the network of their membership, essentially a private event on their own, taking place on their own, within their own facility. That's not something that we would expect them to come and make application for this. But if they're throwing a, a, you know, a carnival-type activity where there's, you know, there's rides and they're expecting, and they're advertising for public, not members of their church, maybe have such towns, come to that event. So not a, not an in-house party that you invited people to, specific people to, but typically an event open to the public, does that become, that's the primary reason why the Public Spaces Board took it on, because those events become public spaces.
Well, I think being invited by the public to, it's open to the public creates an issue because a wedding ceremony, and I'm just gonna use wedding ceremony, because it's public, I mean, people are coming, you're not, you're not charging admission.
Right.
So.
And I don't think, I don't think weddings would fall.
That's an invited event, I think.
That's, that's.
Well, if you read it under five, it clearly matches what is being said under number five.
He didn't, no, it said throw the church up the bus or anything, but they, it was a Facebook, like, hey, everybody, I'm, all were welcome, as it always is at their church, all were welcome. And so it was really promoted, like, get out the community and invite your friends. We really, he makes the money to that, at that point, replace the roof. And so, yeah, I just feel like the less we, the hoops we have to jump through as community members, the better, especially for things on private property. But even some public property, like the athletic event, like when I read it, I thought, gosh, that could really be family reunion and they're gonna have a kickball game and then they have, you know, some of them are watching on the sidelines, they have to go get a special use permit. It, it just seems like it's a little bit, where, where again, I under, I completely get if it's obstructing traffic or shutting down a street, like, I totally understand that, but things that are private space or even, even public space, but not really affecting.
So what we'll do is we'll bring, I think we've kind of got some, the general concept.
I've got some comments for me summarize things. I would be opposed to paying regulation on private property. And so I can understand you might want to regulate Ferris wheels and so forth on, on the city property. And I'm sure Ferris wheels have, they fall under some state law for, for installation and regulation. So, but the thing that stands out to me is this thing is rife with lawsuits. This rife. And for instance, number six, nonprofit group. Who's decide what nonprofit is acceptable and what nonprofit is not acceptable? And you just open yourself up for, well, you don't like my group, so I'm suing you. And why couldn't you let this other group that's on the other side of the fence do that? And then, so it's, we, we, I understand the intent, but we have stepped way over bounds on this thing. And we need to have a city that's free for the citizens to enjoy the city, not a city that's inhibited and look, this, this is pretty severe and can be read that way. You know what? I trust my fire chief, I trust my police chief, I trust the city administrator, I trust the employees. You guys aren't all gonna be here forever. How do we know we can trust the future leaders of the city not to take these rules and just absolutely gear them towards their own passions and desires? So I, I don't, I'm very opposed to most of the adoption.
And maybe something that would go on, and I don't know what you have coming back to us, but the sale of alcohol is probably a, a good trigger. You know, I think, I think that's a good trigger. You know, if you're going to sell alcohol.
And there's, there's different sections of the code that speak directly to do that.
Say what?
There's, there's different sections of the code that speak direct that have that requirement, therefore alcohol.
Right.
So what you're, so the direction I'm getting from the group, if you'll allow me to summarize a little bit so I can take this back to CPPS Board, is more of a focus on stronger tie to events specifically selling or involving alcohol, possibly some kind of review of if there's, you know, good model that they're related to attendance or capacity levels and then traffic effects.
And I would even say, and I don't drink, but probably just the sale of alcohol.
Right, I was, I was gonna say, not, not just including alcohol, because you have a group of 30 teams that are doing a cornhole challenge out on, out on there and they're drinking some beer. I don't, I don't think they need a.
Alcohol sales.
The sale of alcohol, I think, would be the trigger.
And even in, in the capacity, I'd be cautious on that, on how many capacity levels, I don't know. But if it's not keeping traffic.
I don't believe any motions needed, I think it would be consensus, so.
I, I guess that, oh, you're gonna take it back then, bring it back to the council. Thank you.
Not that we don't appreciate the board's efforts, I will tell you that, but that's what we're elected for.
All right, next item on the agenda will be consider ordinance number 1034 related to start time for regular city council meeting. Grab my water.
Yes, sir. As you know, it was raised during the last meeting about the possibility to change our meeting times from 7:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. It's completely within the purview of the council to do so. Subsequent to that meeting, I heard from a few of y'all that seemed to like that idea, so we decided to go ahead and place that on this agenda. Again, we are required by statute to hold at least one meeting per month and we have to publish our meetings so that. and we have to publish our meetings so that the public knows when our regular meetings are. We can have special meetings and other kind of meetings, but, so we have to by ordinance set the date and the time of our meetings, which we already have. If they fall on a holiday, they go the next day, et cetera, et cetera. So this ordinance does one thing simply, and that is to move it from seven P M. to six P M. That is the permits of the council. Simple as I can make.
So what, what's the purpose, what, what's the underlying motivation?
I, sorry, I, I've been on the phone to the county-
Yeah, well, I brought it up and, and speaking with others, yes, I, yeah. Not necessarily city council, but other people also. But, um, it seems like there's been quite a few times that we have, uh, it's getting later and later, you know? And, um, if you start a meeting at seven and you don't have dinner, maybe you worked until five and you, or six and you had to get here, and you haven't had dinner, by the time you get home and it's midnight, and you're trying, or eleven o'clock, and you're trying to whine down and have dinner, or get something to eat, then you're heading right to bed. So that was, that was mine. Uh, I think that it also may be a benefit to staff that gets off work at five o'clock, and they have to, and you, you helped me out with this, I don't know, but, uh, two hours later, an hour later may, may help.
I mean, from, I, purely from a staff standpoint, right? I mean, I think anybody that's worked in the business for a long time has probably had meetings at all kinds of different times, but, but certainly, you know, I mean, some go home in between, some, you know, stay and use that extra time for work. So, I mean, generally speaking, I mean, it certainly probably makes our day a little bit shorter overall.
So what's the purpose of a city council meeting?
For, for the public, I mean, it's the business meeting of the council, and that's its primary function.
And we're doing the business of the sits.
Yes.
My concern is that for those people that are working, they have families, if they want to attend our meeting, to go home and try to get a dinner. Uh, if they get off work at five, as the illustration was usually, go home, try dinner with their family, try to get things squared away from the evening, and be here for public comments at six o'clock. That seems a little unrealistic for the average working person. And so, um, I, I, that to, that to me seems a little more problematic when we're meeting later. If we had public comments at the end, I might, I might see the value in shortening down an hour, but I, I don't see the value of, how long have we done meetings at seven o'clock?
Since my time, I, I, I don't know, I mean, at least for fourteen, I mean, fourteen, thirteen, fourteen.
I don't know, there's never been.
It's been longer than that. I, I mean, I, I prefer to have a meeting at-
Only when I'm in.
And I know-
How long have we had waste disposal? And we're looking at going to a different one, things change?
I, I, I think staff is gonna take, is neuter, I mean, it, it is your meeting, it is the, I mean, it is the public's meeting, it's the council sets this time. I mean, you can set it at two in the afternoon if you choose. I mean, there, there's nothing, I'd say currently correct me, but I don't think there's anything statutory that dictates what the time is other than you are required to hold at least one meeting per month in the city at the second class. And you have to publish the time of that meeting, that, those are the two requirements.
Mike, is the agenda set and done? So if, if we were to go to six, could the public comments be moved to the end, does that-
They could be, public comments can, I'll say two things about public comments. Number one, they're not required, I mean, so you don't, I mean, you can choose to have them or not have them. Again, there's, they're from an, from an agenda, from a statute, there's no requirement for them. And they can be placed at any place on the agenda you chose to have.
The only drawback, because I kind of thought about that before too, is public comments at the end, is if they want to comment on something we're getting ready to vote on that evening, then they wouldn't really be able to share with us their thoughts unless they knew.
Well, and, and my feeling too is on changing the, the group, the position of public comments, then you force them to stay through the whole meeting. And I don't agree with that.
We might be able to bump it down a little bit, like maybe after bill's paid or in minutes or, or, no, we already do that, don't mind. That's not helpful.
My, my feeling is to do the work that's-
One thing I wanted to, um, maybe suggesting this doesn't have to be the start time, is when we have executive sessions, recently we've been doing those at the end, so people don't have to sit through them, could we just make up habit of that so our folks are sitting sometimes for an hour, wait for us to come back and then finish up for the statements? I feel like that's worked out really well in the job that I'm doing.
So I, I, so you, you, you would, you would prefer to see executive session at the beginning first, again?
Don't have the barrier.
Again, the, the order, I mean, I, I would say generally the order of the agenda is really deferred to the mayor, uh, as, I mean, I, I mean, just statutorily, I mean, one of the, one of the duties of, I mean, obviously, you think, obviously it's a group effort, but I mean, but, I, I, you know, statutorily, right, one of the duties of the mayor is to set the agenda of the meeting, because it is a meeting of the government.
Well, then I would defer that to the mayor.
So we, we take our direction going-
From you two, and we had talked about this. It seems a little, a little, um, bit, and no offense, disrespectful for some folks to have to sit through a whole meeting, and then when we get up and we say, oh, we'll be back in twenty minutes, and we come back and say, oh, we'll be back in thirty minutes, and then we're, I mean, so having executive session at the end, I think, it, it lets them see the majority of the meeting maybe, and if they'd like to stay, they can stay.
My, my only input on that is, is that sometimes the executive session has to come back and have, have action taken on to an item on the agenda. So, so you, you start jumbling all that around. So, uh, I, I agree with the, the time change, I, I like it. I, I like, I would like coming earlier than, than seven o'clock, but, uh, as far as changing the, the road, the form of the agenda, I, I'm quite, quite happy with the way it is. Because there's an extenuating circumstances for everything, and you can't satisfy everybody and everything.
Well, the other side too is we're paying these consultants by the hour, and very large some by the hour. And if they're here for three or four hours, and we have an extended meeting, and the last thing is an executive session, and it goes ten o'clock in the evening, and attorneys would sit in there since six.
Yeah.
Uh, and we back up and I sort of do.
I, I will say this about meetings, again, order in general, uh, historically from other places, right? So you, some places will set, they'll have, I, I think Basar does, or maybe some others. So they'll, they'll have two meetings per month. And one of those meetings is basically their council action type of meeting. And then they have a second meeting that's really a work session meeting, which I think you could still take actions on, it's only up to form of council, right? So we could set, for example, uh, I think some places will automatically set, they'll have a work session once a month, and they just set that at six o'clock again by some ordinance or by some thing. You, you could have, I mean, it's typically speaking on executive sessions, number one, we don't have a lot of those, I think y'all know my feelings about those. Those should be, they're rarity and not common, you know, they shouldn't be common. Now, they'll have them go in groups, but, but, I mean, I, I, I know this year, early on in my career in this city, it was like we had an executive session every meeting, and it was kind of like, you know, we, we should get out of the habit of having an executive, that's my personal feeling. You could always, if we know we're going to have an executive session, uh, I, I, we could probably set that some way that's at the point of start of the regular meeting. I mean, you still have to call a meeting to order, it may have to be a special meeting, I'm not sure. Uh, you know, we can look at that, if, if that's, you know, if that's an issue. We don't have them very often, and you can always call, or, I mean, I understand executive meeting. If there's something on this agenda, and you felt you needed the advice and counsel of the city attorney, you can call for an executive session at any, it doesn't have to be technically pre-scheduled. Obviously, if they're rescheduled, I think the, 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 I'm sure, so-
I think it was pretty clear that the mayor just said that he would like for it to remain the way it is, so I'm okay with leaving it the way it is.
As, as I see it, the only drawback to meeting at six is, is those work sessions. So we may have to schedule those on another night other than council meeting. Because, you know, because then now, then you gotta call mayor at five o'clock, you know, for a work session. So I think, I think if you schedule those work sessions on another evening, I think, you know, rather than a regular council meeting, I think that would work out, and so that would smooth the transition.
Generally, those are budget meetings.
Yeah.
The most common special meeting, work session we have is budget, which is generally two or three of those in a given year, so.
Okay, and one of the-
So I'm understanding we're taking no action on ordinance 1034?
Nope.
Or I don't know, I'm, or is it?
No, I, I, no, I, I think that, I think the council's ready to vote.
So, so if I hear your motion for going ahead- Yeah, well, I had one more question. And I would say with, in regards to folk, people, citizens coming to our meeting, that is why we did implement Facebook and Facebook Live for people to be able to access our meetings. And, and I will say, I don't, I mean, appreciate the ones that come, but we don't see them at seven o'clock beating down our door, and we're, you know, here all the time right now. So I make a motion to approve City Ordinance Number 1034 and let you start time of the regular city council meeting from seven o'clock to six o'clock.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to, to adopt ordinance number 1034 related to start time for regular city council meetings from seven o'clock to six o'clock. Would the clerk please call over?
Schreiber?
Yes.
Stikes?
Yes.
Adams?
No.
Kahr?
I just have a strong feeling on the other hand. Looks this way, you make it easier for them.
Well, you have a motion at six, so I have-
So I have to vote on it?
Yes, you do. You can abstain.
And here's the- May everybody able to add something?
Uh, I, I would refer, we prefer to, to follow the regular rules of, of, of rules, and, and there's been a motion, there's already been two votes, so we have to finish voting.
Okay.
Thank you, I'm sorry.
Well, no problem.
Yeah.
Can we vote out of order?
If you're alone, if you're alone, have you voted?
No, I don't think, can I just, can I just?
No, you can't abstain. So you don't have a lot of, a good reason to abstain?
No, I don't have a good reason to abstain. I'm sorry, this is a waste of time. We can always change it back if we decide it's not working for our people, or if it doesn't fit, right? All about yes, if we can change it, if we, if it's not working.
I'm, I'm, I'm sorry to Karen, I forced you to do that, but it's-
That's okay, I just, I wasn't like, usually I have a strong feeling one way or another, and I just didn't kind of split on it.
Okay.
Malat?
No.
That's three to two.
So we have a three to two vote, is that correct? So the motion does carry. Okay, next item on the agenda will be Consider Acquisition of Public Safety Vehicles from Shawnee Mission Ford and Resolution 2020-14, authorizing State Management and International Lease Purchase Agreement with the Union Bank and Trust for financing of this.
As you know, annually, we, uh, go through the replacement, fleet replacements in our departments. Uh, we typically do it about this time of year because the bids for the following year come up, uh, after this, so we're able to like order early, so to speak. We lock in the prior pricing, which is what we've done in this year. Uh, the proposal is for three police patrol vehicles on replacements, uh, and what's called a fire special service vehicle, which is basically an expedition that is, uh, used in fire departments, in the admin, chief, deputy chiefs. Uh, but they have equipment placed in those vehicles, they are emergency response vehicles, they have, we, standards. Uh, again, we don't go out individually and bid vehicles. We use, most of the time people refer to it as the MACPP, but it's actually the MACPP, which is the purchasing agents that are in the MACPP region form of entity some thirty, more than thirty years ago. And basically, one of the, the chair typically of that organization, their entity sets out the bids for pretty much all, uh, light duty types of vehicles, medium light duty vehicles, police patrol vehicles, fire vehicles, uh, light duty trucks, medium duty trucks, kind of across the gamut, uh, they have done that, uh, and so, uh, we purchase off of that. For Fords, there were two bidders, that being Shawnee Mission Ford and Alata Ford. Uh, you could technically go with either one, the base price difference is a couple hundred dollars. Shawnee Mission is less than a, a Lata, but you might find a Lata's less than, I don't want to say a pickup truck or something like that. Uh, we've used Shawnee Mission for a number of years, and those two organizations tend to be on the Kansas side. There's typically a Missouri side bidder too, which is generally, I think, probably a Platte City Ford often does. On the Missouri side, we always take the position on purchasing of Kansas first. So what you have here, uh, is a total for the, on the police side, for their vehicles, uh, the total acquisition, which is both the vehicle and the equipment that goes in it. So I understand the equipment represents about twenty-five to thirty percent of the total cost of these vehicles. So on their side, the total is a hundred and thirty-seven, one ninety. On the fire side, it's one vehicle, the total cost is fifty-two, oh, thirty-four. As you can see, the base price between the vehicles is, uh, roughly four thousand dollar difference. We then go out, once we know what these numbers are, which are all budgeted, we go out to the various banks, we have generally used either U V T or Bank Midwest. Uh, we've used a couple other entities in the past that were outstate. One of the challenges is they often sell the titles, so they package it up and they sell it and sell it and sell it. And pretty soon you're trying to find the title to the vehicle. And one good thing about both of these entities, they hold their own notes. So when the vehicles go to get sold, we know where that, we, it's easier to get the title, let's just put it that way, if it doesn't get resold multiple times. Uh, some bigger things, like the fire truck, we used a different agency called Rev, that's tied with the fire truck manufacturer. Those are kind of separate, unique situations. Uh, we basically put it out the bid every time. For this year, we said we wanted to close on the fifteenth of January. You may recall earlier this year, we did a closing in this year. Typically, we wouldn't have done it last year, we didn't do that because of the tip bonds that got sold, and CID bonds, it put us over the, the magical ten million dollar issuance in any given year. So then you get into whether it's tax exempt funding. In this case, we're under that, this is tax exempt funding. We've got bids back from Bank Midwest, which is known as N V H. Uh, you can see the bids there, their interest rate is basically three point two two, Union Bank and Trust is two point eight nine. You see the, we did both of these as three-year financing. You know, that's fairly typical that we've done. We could go longer on the fire vehicle, but we budgeted for a three-year financing, and we could budget. With that, our recommendation is to, one, acquire the vehicles from Shawnee Mission Ford, and two, to utilize U V T for, uh, the use of lease purchases. I would note here, and we'll answer any questions, and I know our auditor said this before, but I think it's a good point to do this. At some point, especially as interest rates probably start to climb, we very well may want to fund our own vehicles, or have our own internal lease fund, as we've done in a number of places. So what you do is you take a certain amount of money, say two hundred thousand, or just stay out of the, out of the general fund reserve, and you move it over to a vehicle reserve. Then you can acquire the vehicles, and then apartments still make lease payments, right? But you're funding your own internal resources. We couldn't have done that ten years ago because we didn't have the financial resources. Now we're getting to the point where, and especially if, I say especially, if interest rates start to climb, then it's probably to our benefit to basically buy them outright and lease them to ourselves. And I've worked on a number of organizations that have done that, so that may be something in the future we can, versus going to a third party. With that, I know both chiefs are here, they're happy to answer any questions that you have, I'm sure there are a few. Uh, and I'm happy to answer any questions, probably more as it relates to the budget and finances. That, Mayor?
Okay, we're open for questions, or we're open for a motion?
I have a couple of questions, and Michael's really all, didn't hear on me, so I mean, it's your's all right. So, so that'll save you some time tonight. Um, on the, the police vehicles first, I was wondering if you could tell me a little bit about how old are they, how many miles are on them, that sort of information, just kind of why they're ready to rotate out. That sort of information, just kind of why they're ready to rotate out?
Well, okay, so what we have, we answered this question a year ago. This is how it works, October, by the summer we have them. What's unique is this year, we just got them. We only have one of the two that we ordered, even out on the street. It's so backfilled because of COVID and everything else. So this is a little unique year. So if you're asking me what we're selling next year, how many miles, it'd be more estimation. So we will either have two or three, it just depends on what happens through the year. And those will be the ones that say police on the side of the black SUVs. But for this particular year, we should have already had some sold, two of them specifically. But we have to wait until they get stripped down and all this stuff. And again, like I said, we just got those from last year. So we ordered those in last year, October. We just received them in the last five and a half, six weeks. So we haven't had them very long. And then, of course, with the outfitters, that's a backup as well. So everybody got them about the same time, single outfitter because one of the outfitters closed. So they even got their business, so they're swamped all over. So we're waiting them on. So essentially, like the ones we have now, we have a 2012 Chevy Impala that we've had as a, both an admin and a detective vehicle. That should have gone last year. But sometimes we do more repairs than they're worth, so we keep them around a little bit for like training or something. And then we have a 2016 Explorer. Those are going this year. So the next ones will be seventeen or eighteen model years. It just depends on when we bought them and that sort of thing. Because I don't know the rotation for next year, next summer, or what, like those, I'd be guessing. Because when we answer these questions, we answer them as what's happening right now rather than a year from now. But we will have two or three that have about eighty-eight thousand plus miles on them. And what happens is their three years, powertrain, right, warranties and everything are all starting to expire. And they creep up to that hundred thousand mark. And we've had this question, this discussion before, is that their value decreases after a hundred thousand. I mean, if you just think as a citizen consumer, oh man, it's got a hundred thousand miles. Even though cars are going much more than that, that seems like a lot to you and I. But for a police car, that's a whole lot of miles. That thing idles and, you know, runs hard all day long and that sort of thing. So it really starts to devalue after that. So we try to, we try to sell them at the three-year mark. We've had some unique circumstances. Several years ago, we crashed one and got insurance money, so it just throws the thing off a little bit. We had to keep an extra one for the K nine vehicle that controls some of our overhead. But that's a new vehicle that we, it's a single use. So even though there will be a three-year kind of frame for that, we think we can push that to five years. So that will be, there'll be some value in that because it's not getting used by two and three different people in all the hard ride and that sort of stuff. So we think that'll last a couple of years longer. The only thing we have to worry about, once the warranty expires, and we've got a couple of these Explorers that need new engines, that's very expensive. And then the transmission is the most common problem after they get that, especially to creep up to a hundred thousand mile.
How much were those engines when you have to replace them with warranties on them?
You know, you're talking six, eight thousand, yeah. That's all computerized. We had one that was, that we got lucky with. Now, some of those, it's been a few years. One of them just met the warranty mark and they went ahead and accepted it, and it was a common problem. We've had catalytic converter type issues, which were standard from Ford when they delivered them. They were bad, we had some of that. But sometimes they don't discover that for three or four years after you have a vehicle. So some of that warranty work and everything, so it all has to be maintained. I don't know if I track there, but a little bit. But like this, the Ford Explorers, the 2016, right now has a hundred and eight thousand miles on them. We don't want to keep that another year.
And so that's the one that you'll be selling soon, but the fourth year is...
Yeah, we, yes. So the Chevy Impala was expected to go this year, as well as this 2016 Ford Explorer. And the Impala has a hundred and thirty-two thousand on it, miles on it.
And the Impala is used for an admin or detective vehicle?
It was. So what hap, yes, it was. And so it's been in our rotation since 2012, but we've been using it to go to the academy. You know, we need cars to sit down there with those guys to go to the academy and stuff like that. Usually that, sometimes we use the reserve, our marked reserve vehicle for that. We just happen to have, keep this an extra year and people use that particular vehicle to go to the academy.
Well, that is something that we'll look at, because it seems like that would be eventually less expensive to replace, to have an extra car like that than an equipped metro vehicle.
I think just in the fleet will be okay. We need to get rid of these two for sure. They, we've, like I said, on that 2012, we did some work to it. That's typically what happens is you get into a year and you say, okay, this year we're going to sell it. Well, just think, we just drove a car that we thought we were going to sell by June, clear in October, right? And so we keep using it. And that's what happens is, what happens? We're still using, we use it, it drops a transmission, forty-eight hundred bucks, right? So now you put a forty-eight hundred dollar piece of equipment on a car that's worth maybe six thousand dollars, right? So sometimes we've held some of those things back just for that purpose of maybe, hey, we know we have two guys that go to the academy for the next sixteen weeks, that may be beneficial to have them drive that and that sort of thing.
And will we have another small vehicle or car like that eventually?
Yeah, there's still a sedan in the fleet that we'll be able to use.
That's what, yeah, because I think that was, that's a great decision to have the mileage on something.
Yeah, that's not all marked up, driving down the fleet. You know, if you're driving behind a marked police car, no matter where it's from, you slow down, that makes sense.
That's the truth, I'm just letting everyone know.
That's just one thing. But, you know, yes, have that little travel car, because we do, we do quite a bit of traveling with our officers, going to these command schools and stuff. And all of that tends to be in Hudson's camp. So that's, there's a lot of, that's where our training center is at. So that's, perhaps we do a lot of traveling down there.
And the other question I had was just about the fire vehicle, if we need the size of an expedition or if a smaller one was the...
When we started the EMS service in fourteen, we bought a small Ford Explorer off a lot. You cannot put a backboard or anything in there without taking a drive around and not give it any type of space in the back at all.
Serpentine backboards and things that...
Usually we had pickup backboards in the hospital because the ambulance didn't put them back up. Deputy chief does a lot of medical supply running. But the other component is, is we also have portable scene lights in the back of these vehicles, SCBA, turnout gear, man boards, accountability boards, mapping ALS packs, oxygen packs, fibulators and everything else, that if we went smaller, we'd be not only backhatched, but also the backseat. And it's already overflowing with the backseat on the vehicles. So we had moved up from the fourteen in sixteen when we bought the seventeen expedition I have now. And like I said, it's almost packed, as it is now. So we couldn't go any smaller for what we're trying to do, is a smaller agency and get it all onto two admin vehicles.
Related to that, are we bagging the equipment on site? Like the gear and so forth, those fires, extinguish bagging, I can bring it back?
Well, we are deconning it on site. The problem we have with bag units, we have no place or nothing to hold. So if we have a large, an example would be the one we had with fire DMS. We had occupational exposures because of the ink and the polymerization that occurred in there. Then we decon the guys and we actually cut them down, stole a pickup truck to bag it back up and bring it back. But now with the cancer prevention being that you're deconning every time and bagging back up, we can go buy another pickup truck just for that. But the problem is, is you're still putting dirty gear even in bags. So right now, it's, we try to decon it, fill it up on the back of the truck so it's not in the crew department with the guys and get it back, because we have kept a second set of gear, so they wash their stuff so they can back and drive.
Thank you, appreciate it.
I have a question. Is that MACPP?
Yes, ma'am.
Just remind me again, that's a company we use?
Well, so we are, so MACPP is the purchasing, it's the metro area co-op or the cooperative for purchasing. So purchasing agents from cities throughout the region formed this organization. So they formed it through Mid-America Regional Council. So where we've, in the past, we might buy off of what I'm referring to as the Houston-Gallaston purchasing cooperative or one of the others for light duty vehicles, or say local group, and that's what this group does, so.
So remind me once again, why, like Victory Ford can't be in on this?
They could be, they just have to bid them.
They're reached out by this whole...
Yes. I mean, they send it out to all of the area vendors, about, I think, twelve total respond. So when they put the bid out, they don't put it out, say, for, they put it out by some police vehicle, right? So Dodge Charger is one, we got Ford, I don't know whether Chevrolet makes a police vehicle anymore. They have an electric vehicle, I think, that they're now pushing, I mean, more of an admin vehicle. So it goes out broadly through a public bid process, through all the various agencies. They're very, I mean, they're very good about trying to get that out. And actually, the Unified Government and Board of Public Utilities are two of the agencies that are... So there's primary members, which means that they have a purchasing, we don't have a purchasing any, right? So we effectively are buying off of somebody else. But the Board of Public Utility and Unified Government both sit on that bidding agency and are part of the process.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to adopt Resolution 2020-14 for the purchases of vehicles as listed in item number seven on the agenda. It has been moved and second to adopt Resolution 2020-14 authorizing the city manager entering into lease purchase agreement with Union Bank and Trust for financing of the sale. Would the clerk please call over?
I would, just want to say, I really would like, and I know that it's out of our hands, but I would sure, just like our trash just goes, what we talked about, I would sure like for this business to be in line up. That's all I'd say.
I think we would, we would hope that they bid, we would encourage them.
But they don't bid, they don't bid again.
We'll encourage them, so.
Right, at this point.
I think the next round, I think the new bids are coming out November, I mean, they generally start the bid opening in November, and so we'll...
Yeah, like I said, I know it's out of our, you know, but I'd sure like for this...
Right.
To do what they gotta do and get this going.
Would the clerk please call over?
Schreiber?
Yes.
Stikes?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Khar?
Yes.
Malat?
Yes.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda, consider Resolution 2020-15 authorizing the initiation of eminent domain proceedings for the Fourth Street Quiet Zone project.
Well, I know you all are familiar with this process, but I will go through it just for clarity. So as you know, and it has been a lot longer process than it should have been, to get the quiet zone, when the UG came in, the county wanted to do a quiet zone, basically started in Bonner Springs, that swings the road and goes through Ninety-Eighth Street, I believe, is first phase. So covered Bonner, and that was going in first phase. The intent was that the Unified Government was going to, and they still are, handle the, all the work related to the crossings and effectively a hundred feet on either side. That's the area that has to have raised medians and any improvements, making it quite a... We, as you recall, decided that if we are going to be making those improvements, Fourth Street, that section doesn't have curb and gutter. Obviously, the pavement driven on it is deteriorating, and so it's going to have to be improved anyway. So the appropriate time is to try to tie that all together, and we are still trying to do that. In the interim, of course, hoping to make this more difficult, we have contacted all those property owners, if I remember right, there's sixteen of them along there. We mainly need temporary constructions. So what we're saying is we need about ten feet in order that we can replace the sidewalk, put in the curves, regrade the dirt up to the sidewalk, so we're not taking any property except for one, we have a permanent drainage. But for the most part, these are all temporary construction easements. I can now say fourteen of the sixteen have voluntarily said yes, because the improvements we're making is curb, the gutter, the driveway approaches. I've met with a number of people out there, you know, they're like, when are you going to get it done? I've heard no more. So I have been pushing on the UG to say, you know, if one way or the other, we're going to push this thing and get those road improvements done. We have two property owners that are still outstanding. We are in continual discussions with them. Somewhat it is, yes, I'll get back to you, yes, I'll get back to you, yes. And so we're kind of running up against that same thing, and we need to move this project forward. I think ultimately both will participate just from the past claims. But this is a lengthy process, as you know. So what we're asking for tonight is that first step, which is to pass a resolution authorizing the project and authorize the engineer to create the legal description of the area that we need temporary easement and appropriate drainage which technically are already all completed, which is the process that we need. What is different about this, this is not KDOT funded, so there are less hoops to go through than it had federal funding. There's no federal funding, this is all local funding. So we have the ability, more ability to negotiate in a process like this than we do in a KDOT where it's go higher the appraiser, the appraiser comes forward and you're very much off. So we have more option. So again, what I'm asking for tonight is this first step. We hope this kind of helps us push it over to final, and we can get these done and get this project bid out. So at this point, we're not going to see construction in the winter con, but this way we hopefully can start in early spring. Whether the railroad does its quiet zone or not, the intent is we, and I'm going to say we, the us and the UG, I think there are more of this too, we're going to make all the improvements we can make, which is to end the median, raised medians, and we'll have to wait on the railroad. Fourth Street, the one change is they have to add additional panels so the sidewalk can go over and around behind the crossing arms. We'll build the sidewalk up as far as we can go without, you know, getting into that last bit of work. And then we may have to, we, in that case, we, or the UG, come back and make that final final. But the plans are all there, everything's, I mean, we have everything we need to move forward except the last two.
Sidewalks on the west side?
Correct. None on the east, there's existing sidewalks in the west, those have been taken out. As you know, some of those have sunken and rose, and so, and once you put curb in it, so the road actually gets milled down a little bit if you've got the rise and curb. And so that's really part of the reason for the temporary construction easements is make sure we grade that back appropriately and have those houses. And again, mainly for the driveways. So it, all of those driveways along there will be improved with a concrete approach back to the property lines. So if you look at where the road is today, it's not, it not going to change much in width of the road, a little bit, maybe a foot. And so if you go back ten feet or so, ten, fifteen feet, that's probably maybe up to twenty feet, that'll be concrete approaches for all of those driveways. We also have to work with the Moma Home Park. A portion of the existing sidewalk is technically untainted property. And so thanks to our city attorney, she had more hair, I think, when she started that process than maybe today. But they two participated in that, so we can get the sidewalk, so the ADA compliance. And that's the other part of this, right? If this path will be compliant with ADA, so as you know, people have raised their concern about being able to get farther up the road and getting over railroad crossings and things like that.
I have just a couple of questions on that. Fourteen out of sixteen are happy with it. Are there any concerns that were brought forth by the two that haven't signed on yet?
The one no, it's been more just a challenge connecting with them. And we may use our right of way people, they have resources that we don't have to help us maybe make phone connections or things like that. But mainly, it's just been, I haven't heard any complaints, it's been, yes, you know, I'm just busy, I'll get down there, or it's COVID. And we've offered to go onsite to them and take, I can take a staff member that can stand them and all those kind of things. And the other one, I think, is probably the more complicated one, so it does involve a permanent drainage easement. So there's some improvements back to the property that have to occur. And I think there may be some of those, just working out some final details. I do believe we'll be able to move forward with this, but we're just kind of getting at that point like last, we're just... We hope we don't even come back for the ordinance, but this will help, it should set the stage to keep moving forward.
Does that permanent drainage easement, is it substantial on their property or is it just...
No, it's underground pipe. I mean, it's quite honestly... I mean, it, it's, it quite honestly, you know, it's a part of the property that's seen somewhat disrepair. It, it will be better subsequent to this project they were doing. We had looked at going a different route, but, but we were able to shorten that route, and actually, that's a portion of the project that UG had picked up. So they picked up some additional, so to speak, expenses to save them some money on the drainage that they're able to put back in, helping improve that piece of property.
For the most part, it's construction easement, we're not taking their...
Yeah, we're not taking many right of ways, no right of ways, no, you know, one permanent drainage easement, all the rest are temporary construction easements.
And where the sidewalk is now, is there's already existing sidewalk, we're not adding into it, or whatever.
And it's inside the right of way now, so, so we're not happy. But because the sidewalk is right up against the right of way or within, you know, foot, so when you pour the new sidewalk, you gotta be able to grade back and set the forms, and so you technically are going to be working on somebody's property, and so therefore you get temporary construction. The construction easements and everything are, at this point, all dated, go through 20, December 31st, 2021, so if we can make everything happen, we'll meet that date. If not, then we'll have to go back and renegotiate all of this. COVID certainly made it more difficult for people to come in, but most of this went out like March, so we've been doing most of the, but, you know, that was February, I think maybe it's the first letters out, but of course, with the COVID, we kind of didn't push it and let it set for, you know, a few months, I guess. We weren't open, and people weren't getting out, and so we kind of went out, we weren't able to, it didn't need to be necessary. Happened no second.
If God forbid, the railroad continues to stall for a very lengthy period of time, what are the advantages to our community of the project?
Well, I think that the road itself is just, I mean, it doesn't drain, it drains into, some of those drain, the water come off the road and into the yard, so this will keep it in the curb and gutter system down, you know, it's designed to go down to the river. It will expand the right turn lane a little bit at Fourth and K-32, so you know, I say the right turn, it's the right straight through lane, but the right is there, so it does put the curb and gutter through there. It does, there's a fire hydrant and a pole and some other things right at that location that get, that get moved back, so we'll be capturing stormwater mainly, most of the stormwater capture is north of the railroad, that's where we have some of the problem, but mainly that and the road will be a new paved road with proper curb and gutter, proper sidewalk, so. And we did, I didn't, I mean, in the 2019 bombs, we did put in 320,000 for this project. Right now, we'd say it's well below that, I'd say well below, it appears to be below $300,000 on our part of the cost. The intent is, if we can do this as part of the bigger project, we can buy those units, you know, a unit of curb, if I'm only pouring 100 linear feet of curb, or I'm pouring 3,000 feet of linear curb, I'll get a better, somewhat better price on that.
I'd like to make a motion to pass Resolution number 2020-15. I don't need to read that. Something good for me, but...
Second?
Okay, it's been motioned and made in second to adopt Resolution 2020-dash-15. Would the clerk please call roll?
Schreiber?
Yes.
Steitz?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Kayhart?
Yes.
Malak?
Yes.
Here, an update on here.
And I'll just stay up here, just to make it a little easier. So just so you know on the CARES, as you recall, we have a number of projects. We have received the funding, 449,409, I took a little bit of eight, so I think we got an extra $9, so we'll try not to spend that all in one place. You know basically the projects that we are working on. So right now, we're in process of acquiring the necessary computers, et cetera, and the remote access, and also the council AV upgrades, which is in here, so that includes the ability to do more live streaming and have, you know, have all of those pieces in place. Thankfully, some of the equipment we bought previously is going to be reusable, but so we'll have better mics, we'll be able to hear when you're, you know, people are talking, the audience will be able to hear. Will be television type screens available, so both of the audience, the council will be able to see visually things versus necessarily on the wall. So those improvements, right now, that looks like that will come in under budget. We were thinking it was gonna be in the $40,000 range, I think maybe probably closer to the $20,000 range, that's a good thing. The other, we're working on getting the acquire, it says the municipal court health and safety upgrades, some of that was security, so one was security, so when people like typical courts, you go do a detector, so we don't have to touch people, you know, use that. And it also includes some equipment, so they can do remote arrangements and those types of things. Right now, nobody has to get around a little bit of a computer screen to do that, so it's more like you would think of the television screens and those abilities. Probably the, the big ones I want to talk about, and I'll, I'll start with one and then come back, on the booking room modifications. We originally had an estimate of $100,000. We did put that out for request. We got one back from KBS, which, you know, we worked with them, they did the front remodel up a year, we know who they are. Their initial bid was 93,000, thereabout, so, you know, we were pretty good on our, on our estimate, but we've met with them and to try to get that project down, so we will be at about 73,000, and so they intend to execute that contract shortly. Doing the same things, it's mainly when you come in the back door, the booking area, be able to secure people, but we, we took out some glass walls, we're doing some things with our staff, like there's some removal of existing equipment and doors and stuff like that. You know, our, their charge is 60 bucks an hour for labor, so we said, hey, you know, we'll put our public works folks out there, you know, a day like this, if they're done with all the other stuff, it's the perfect day to, you know, get in there and take stuff out. So we were able to save some there, some modifications on actually holding cells and stuff like that. So it is over our budget of the 60,000, but as you heard, we have other dollars.
Wait, 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 as you heard, we have other dollars. Where, so where are we cut?
Within, I'm just saying, within the dollars we have here, we have...
Which one was the most significant, was the upgrade stand here?
Uh, yes. Yeah, the city council AV upgrade improvement, probably about half that cost that we were expecting, and I think our remote access is going to come in as well.
Mike, is it possible that we save, and I think you kind of just answered it, to say I'm wanting, we can bump it to use it on another project? Would it be possible if we end up having enough money left over to apply some of that toward the learning lab? I feel like that would be a huge benefit to our entire community.
And, yes, and I'm, I'm gonna touch on that a little bit more.
Before we leave that, on the booking room modification, will that, will the modifications still, will the building still be moved? So if, if we were to build a new center, would we be able to give that center to some other community, just like we were taking as well?
Yeah, yeah. So if you, if you've been in there, so when that building was, so that building was being used by their bicycle patrol, some of their special services and detective, and so the area that we use for the booking room actually had areas for bicycles in there, and, and so like, that's gonna come out. Right now, we have a fence that's up there, that comes out, and a permanent wall gets put in. Some of the areas where they do evidence storage is moving, and we're, you know, putting in some proper stainless steel tables, so you're not contaminating things like that. So not a lot of, you know, closing in a door here, putting in a door there, so it's less... Probably the most change is actually where you hold the prisoner, so that will be basically a tempered glass type of thing. So right now, they're basically in a metal cage behind a chain link fence. This puts it into more of a glass, I think, so the officers can, can see them, but also it separates the officer and the defendant, and they can pass things via a window, you know, after, so they're not, you know, they can't spit through the cage at you, they can't... There'll be in there, there'll be a second toilet in there, those kind of things, so...
I just wonder, sure, it was, it was remained moved?
Yes, yeah, absolutely. The, the UV sterilizers, the fire department's still finalizing on that, though we think that will be probably a pretty significant decrease. Remember, when we did this, we had, you know, a week basically to try to figure some of these things out, so we're doing like most people, we're out there trying to figure, figure those things out. Public messaging, I'll start on that one, and so I think you all have seen this, I've generally heard from you, so instead of buying, so we had in the public messaging, two temporary portable type signs, those were about 20,000 each, and we had some money in there to potentially do some more public messaging, like using a firm or somebody to help us do social messaging and things. We've converted it to a permanent sign, which I know we talked about, to be located, I'm gonna show the next slide, so we're saying, basically looking to locate it here at Fourth and K-32. That area is city right of way, so it's one of the, it's the only area where we actually have access right of way, and so we're working around that. We do know the church has a sign, we haven't had a chance to speak with them, but the way it's being laid out is we want to secure it. I mean, at some point, yeah, covers it up again, but if you're coming down K-32, you'll still be able to see both signs and things like that. So we're working on that. If you go back to the last slide, and again, the, the screen, the prism screen is basically that five by about 10. It says 12 by six, because there's some drainage things around, but roughly that size. We may try to shorten the height a little bit, it's, it's a little tall, I think, but that price has come in at $59,000, so pretty much right on what we had, but we'll have probably 2,000 or so, because we gotta get electricity to it, so we'll, we'll have to get a meter set and that stuff. They do all of that, so besides doing signs, they are a licensed commercial electrical company, so they can do all the electrical work, they just, they, they didn't price that specific, it kind of a labor materials thing, but we think about $2,000 should cover that. So the sign will be slightly over what we thought, but, but not far. Again, the police renovations are a little more than what we allocated, but, but less than what we originally thought. So overall, I think we will have funding to be able to reallocate to one of these projects. The other thing that's come up, and I had a chance, we talked to some of you on that, so the UG submitted a grant under the CARES Act II to expand fiber optic network, a private network, CNEO network. Basically, it would come down state, connect at state, come down 98th Street. We're now saying, take it all the way to Wood End, and then Wood End around the 9th Street, come up and hit play. The reason for that is, in the future then, if there are private sellers of that network, there's a fiber connection there, plus our lift stations down there, so as we get into more ability to, you know, manage lift stations remotely and things, that fiber will be there, it'd be to this side, it covers connecting all of it. The challenge has been, is how much, how much is who giving what in that, and so we're still working on that. I will tell you, the most recent discussion was that the county would cover 50%, it's 700,000 is the match, it's, the total project's three and a half million dollars, the county would cover half, I say county, in whatever mechanism that they get funds from. Some could be 911 funds, because they're eligible, it could be from CARES Act dollars is a source for that, et cetera and so forth. So they'll fund half, the school district would fund about a quarter, and for them, they already are paying for private service, so having their own network, then they don't have to pay those expenses, ongoing repetitive expenses, nor would we have to pay for those expenses. So instead of us going out to a Specter or an AT&amp;T or somebody else that's paying monthly, we would have our own fiber network, and it includes some of the equipment, so we can connect and use it. The chief can probably talk more to the technical pieces than I ever can, but it's just a matter of how are we going to divide that last 25% between us and Bonner Springs? I think my general suggestion is we use population before, so seems to be not a reasonable way. We could use our CARES Act dollars as all are part of our match, or we could use other dollars, such as economic development or whatever. So I know it's got a lot of pieces there, but...
Isn't lane miles also a standard split, splitting device?
Well, we use that, on sci-fi, we use the lane miles. You know, in this case, probably the total distance of fiber conduit is pretty close, because what it would do is it would loop on K-32, over to Nettleton and go up and connect those, or go up to Seager or whatever, connect those buildings there, go Nettleton, pass the library, go out past their fire station, go up K-7. Of course, it's gotta connect the schools, there's also a link to connect Nettleton Elementary, so all the schools should be connected, including, so all, against those four elementary, the middle school, high school, would all be connected to this project.
What's the timeframe on this?
Well, they have to have it substantially complete by the end of the year.
What they told me on the site survey was they'll go buy three companies, eight point some miles apiece, and get it done before January.
So when do you need to know how we will fund it and how we'll split it between Bonner?
ASAP, I think, I don't necessarily need a decision, I wanted to kind of put that out there for you and give you what my thinking is.
Can you tell me, like, there is a lady who came in a few months ago, I think she lived on 102nd Street, and she was still at like, satellite internet or whatever. Will this benefit that area?
Not initially, I mean, so the, help me on the bed, but that fiber optic, there's like 288 strands of fiber, and each strand is a connection. And out of this, and I don't remember the exact number, 20 some odd strands or four, cities, right? And, and the reason it got the grant dollars, because it has to go for schools, cities, public safety, right? That, that's the purpose. The other strands, and this is one of the areas that I think we still have some negotiations, is the question is, if we have excess strands and those, or we've paid to put this in the ground, this company, it's UPN, it's a name of the company, goes and sells that to a third party, right? They, they don't provide internet service, they're not an ISP, but they would sell that dark fiber to, and again, I'll pick on Specter just because they're right, so they sell to Specter, Specter says, I'm gonna go connect this neighborhood with fiber, off of these fiber. We wanna know how the city as a whole then benefits from that, if we're the ones that put in the infrastructure to begin with, we should get some of that back.
Kind of like a franchise fee on it?
Yes, yes. And they have a little different scenario than KCK, but yeah, we've already said, there's gotta be some kind of a franchise, I mean, they're gonna be in our right of way, it's a public utility, we require a franchise.
We're not trying to hang it off of a wire, than existing wire?
No, this is all...
Like the, like the others?
But it could, but I mean, they could go overhead with fiber, right? If they had to get it to a place, that's certainly cheaper, but generally, most of the fiber optic companies are all going 100 grand. I mean, I won't say 100%, but that seems to be the preferred, because if it gets cut or damaged, it's really a lot more expensive. Cut a fiber line, it's a lot more expensive than cut a typical coax cable for getting it repaired and, and so...
So would that be beneficial in the way that if we did a learning lab, we'd have access for...
We'd have that, we'd have that over there, that high, high speed, you would have the highest possible speed internet that you could have through fiber today. I wouldn't say that'd be the same 10 years from now, but...
But if we were gonna use any... But if we were going to use any CARES Act dollars toward a learning lab, say, within excess, we would have to get that moving, so it would be substantially completed before the end of the year?
Yes. The learning lab, most of the learning lab costs were really more equipment, right, I mean, that is, having space, which we use, and then mainly the computers and workstations, right, and we have workstations here, you know, really it was about spacing, right, is having that space, having protections, you know, do you add some, I think I've seen this in offices where we're adding plexiglass up, so that, you know, if you stand up, it's plexiglass between you and the person next to you, that goes down a bit faster.
So, was the last quarter a hundred twenty-five?
The last, one-seventy-five, so it's three, three-fifty the county, one-seventy-five the school district, the other one-seventy-five.
So, a hundred and seventy-five thousand would be the balance due?
Between the two cities or so?
Between the two cities, and then, you know, on the previous CARES Act, those dollars, it was roughly a one-third, two-thirds, right, I mean, I mean, that's, that's just how it worked out because of the population, if you take our total population, and you take our population compared to the total of our two communities, and you take theirs, it's roughly one-third, two-thirds, maybe six and four, it's in that range.
And, and we would be able to access, well, if we had some public funding come available for that?
Yes.
We could allow that to go towards that, correct?
Yes. So, for example, I think another area that might be useful is potentially to use some dollars from economic development, right, because having fiber to the community that's available to businesses is, is clearly a benefit commercial, right, it definitely opens up opportunities that aren't there today in our community. And if you think about, you know, Ninety-Eighth Street from a corridor, again, it's the same as before, so I still have Kansas Avenue, I can go east and west, I got that, you know, I can go River View east and west, right, originally, they talked about coming down a hundred tenth in that way, and the problem is, that is a really tight corridor, very, very tight for the purposes of putting things in the brain, there's just not much room. And while there's some of that on Ninety-Eighth Street, there's a little more workable room through there, just because there's not other things already in place, right, there's not, there's not as much utilities already in the ground, most of the utilities, for the most part, are overhead, like telephone cable, all those things, we have gas and we have water, and, you know, it's all easier to work around. But that's the thinking, I mean, it, I mean, that's kind of my thinking of what I think our participation should be in that vicinity, and that's, again, we could use some of that from here, we could use some of that from economic development, I think those would be the two likely areas that we would look at, that would be the two likely.
I think, I mean, I like the idea of basing it kind of on the population, because that benefited them financially before, so they have more to work with. This is really restrictive in what we can spend money on and when, so it kind of depends on how much of it we work with.
And we can move, so, so again, we submitted this original request, so, you know, again, we kind of, staff and things said, okay, what, what's kind of the want list, what do we, you know, what do we think would be things, we took the approach of what was the purpose of CARES Act, which was, you know, number one was to ensure that local governments were able to be reimbursed for the expenses they had directly related to providing a service to the population around COVID, right, medical calls, please, PPEs, resetting rooms up, all those kind of things, that's where the one sixty-three comes from. So, that, that money basically went back to the bill of fund to pay for those expenses that were unplanned. The rest of these were things we said, we think this is a meeting, right, how does the public connect to us electronically if you can't come be in in-person meetings, how do we, not that we're the educators of children, but we know, we have people, as you know, don't have a way to get to high-speed internet access unless maybe they go to the library, oh, that's right, the library's closed, how about school, oh, that's right, the school's closed, so where do they go to?
Exactly, and right now, Bonner Edwards goes hybrid, so they don't even have the option to go to school every day.
Right, and so that was, and then the rest of it was making sure, you know, was kind of around reducing risk to, to the staff and to, you know, to the people, so those one-on-one contacts, right, but again, we know, we know the things that work, and one of those is maintain separation and, you know, avoid close contacts, and as all of y'all know, especially in the world of police and fire, the people they come in contact with many, many times, you know, you know, they have bodily fluids because they're bleeding and things like that, they may not be the most responsive person to the police officer, you know, they might spit on you, and they might, so, so one of those things we do to try, even, even here, right, how do we try to protect them, so we, so those are how we focus, and then just the messaging, hey, by the way, we're going to have flu vaccines, hey, by the way, we're going to have, you know, COVID tests, hey, by, you know, and we know that we have been to get the message out the way it does, you know, it's why we want to do this, so, but, you know, if, if one of those things comes in under and one comes in over, that's why, we have to submit a report and say, okay, we, we got this amount of money, and here's our list of expenditures, and these were the areas that we originally planned on, I mean, I already talked to them and said, okay, public messaging, we were intending to do these things, but instead, these corridor signs are going to be permanent, so you ain't problem with that, no, it's still, you know, it's still public, public messaging, so, that, you know, that's a big problem.
If we were to just divide it in half, it's eighty-seven, five per city, and, you know, I would think that we would be able to, if we were to leave these dollars out, and I know if we save it, we would put some too, or take it out of that government development or other areas that we take out, but I would think that we would be able to solicit some private funding to help in a, something that helps our students, helps our kids get that high-speed internet. I'm not a hundred percent, I'm just thinking out loud, but I would think that as important as that is, that we should be able to access some dollars.
And we may be, you know, I think, again, purely for staff, like, using that model, you know, that would have put us, you know, fifty, sixty thousand, off the top of my head.
If you did it population-wise?
The population-wise.
Right, well, the broadband initiative, that doesn't, does that, can we use that towards this, or no?
Well, I mean, we didn't fund that particular piece of this, we, yeah, so we didn't, but, and that's what I'm saying, if we had some savings here, we potentially could use some of those dollars, I was surprised, normally they won't let you use federal dollars to match federal dollars, it is an unusual circumstance, but, right, these are federal dollars that came to the state, came to the county, it came to the city, it is pretty rare, I, matter of fact, I can't think of another time where you could use federal dollars to match a federal dollar budget, but they have gone through all the legal loops and said, absolutely you can't. So, again, I'm going to kind of move on that front and, and take that, I think, I do think it's important, you know, I am glad that the county, that wasn't the way they started, I will tell you that, and, and we said, well, there's no way we're picking up half the cost of the cities, I mean, I just, I mean, it's not going to happen, so, they have, you know, come a long ways, like we said in that statement.
Well, my personal opinion is, they should be taken care of at all.
Well, we, we actually said, you know, you've got, you've got one-point-five million dollars in CARES Act dollars to the county, so it seems like they're half, you took half of it out of there, then the problem solved.
Yeah.
I'll have to let you all have discussions with other people besides me, I don't, we, we literally said that, and I say we being, the city mayor, your brother's friends, and myself, both made that comment. Mayor, just a couple of other quick things.
Is this going to be your advisory?
Yes, I'm sorry, yes, we are on a fiber, so, hit the fiber, we are working with all that, so we're, we're working on, it's been broad come time, two street closures, the one being that little short street off of K thirty-two that goes around the Ninety-Eighth, that one section, there's no things, the city attorney was doing some research to see if we needed, if we had to do anything ordinance-wise, we're probably going to do it by resolution, and then temporary up there at the Village South, you know, we've had some problems with people just going back in there and just park, you know, I don't know that, I've not heard of any criminal problems, but people go back there and leave trash and just...
Literally, litter is criminal.
Literally, well, yes, okay, I was meaning more serious, but yes, yes, it is, but we're going to do some, that would be a temporary closure, until we know what, we know what's going to be, it's a public street, right, so the public have a right to drive on it, and so we still have to follow certain standards, so we're getting that taken care of. You remember two weeks ago, we had Alco Development come in here, and they met with us, and we talked about doing a multifamily housing study, and then it was raised about doing a broader housing study as well, and when we came to you, we, we basically said, hey, we think this housing study, the first piece of it, about eight thousand dollars, and we talked about splitting the cost, it seemed to be in general consensus, well, we got a quote on that, as well as using another party to do the broad housing study, and we can probably do it all for under six thousand dollars, so it's...
Six thousand split?
Yes, so, three thousand each, that, that, I'm giving that a rough, but that's, so, so I intend to move forward with that, unless, I mean, I, I think it's easy money well spent.
Oh, yeah.
So, I mean, so we'd have the more specific, so we had some housing study done when we did the Fourth Street, so then, this will be, you know, specific to the multifamily component, is there a market to do that, right, and then the, the broader one is about housing in general, the city, we already have some of the demographic information that can be updated, he actually is working, really has already started, working with, I'm going to say more of a real estate broker firm that does, you know, subdivisions all over the region, even in the country, to do that, and so, you know, there are benefits to other parties.
Well, I would say that with that study, whether this project works or not, whether we do it enough, that that study would be beneficial for us to, and especially if we're going to have somebody split that cost with this, this three-thousand dollar cost, that will benefit us in making decisions down the road for housing needs.
And it may come, we may say, yeah, there's a, there's a, yes, you need this, but this just isn't, but not at this place, or it could say, neither one, or it could say, not only do you need, you need prices, I mean, that's the purpose of it, but, and that's with a national firm that, you know, that...
Is that something that'll be beneficial for two years or five years, or about how long will those studies?
I, I would, I would, you know, the more site-specific stuff is, you know, it's probably one to two years, I mean, you know, kind of depends how, the, the broader one is probably up three to five years, I mean, somewhat it depends, I mean, if you had rapid growth or rapid, you know, have, you know, go either direction, but, I mean, our history doesn't show that, though, I will tell you, we've had more single-family residential permits this year than ever in my time.
If they saw that two-mil reduction, see what it did?
And that's a great lead, how about two-point-six?
I'm rounding up to three, I already told you.
Okay, so, actually, what happened, is, which is the way the system works, right, we had, you know, taken their information, and we assumed that we would have total value of about seventy-four million six-hundred thousand, well, it came in at seventy-five million six-hundred thousand, which then lowered the mil levy to forty-three-two-nine-eight-five, I believe we were at forty-three-eight was what we had proposed.
Yes, yes, yes.
Say it again, to forty-three what?
Forty-three-point-two-nine-eight-five-six-zero, so that's the news I'm living on.
Before you go, give us a timeline on the change in the...
Oh, the ordinance had, and I, I'm sorry, to set that up for first of the year, so we...
I was thinking you said the first of the year.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I mean, if they want to do something, but I mean, the intention was that gives us time to, I mean, right, we, we have three more meetings like this year, we could start the new year, that gives us time to get it out, you know, social medias or buildings, or, you know, just try to get the proper time, and I'm sorry, I just...
Yeah, that's okay.
Well, getting that mil duck levy down into the thirties, I don't know if that's far off now.
We'll keep working on it, sir.
Zach, you got anything?
Just real quick, really just some updates on event-type stuff that we've been planning, so if you walked by into the main office area, you were seeing some different candy stations and the little Play-Doh things that were getting sent out, we've got over two-hundred kids signed up for that neighborhood kind of idea that we talked about, so we're, the kids sign up, no charge for our participate, public safety is going to be dropping off those packages, the bags, the goodie bags with donated candy, and the Make-A-Monster craft, and then they'll be able to come back to City Hall at the end of this week to pick up a little pie pumpkin for decoration, so over two-hundred kids have signed up for that, so, and the amount of time that we were able to get it out, people seem really like that idea, we even had a couple of kids from, as far as Lynnwood, try and sign up for it, which, we won't drop it off in Lynnwood, but they can come and pick up a bag if they want.
Do we have an estimation of how many kids we have, so when you're telling us two-hundred kids signed up, do we have two-hundred-and-ten kids, and we go, man, that's a lot, that's a lot, or do we have a thousand kids?
Well, usually the best barometer we use for our program, our rec program, because it's mostly geared for those elementary school kids, is how many kids are enrolled in that, and between that four and five hundred, right, just elementary school kids.
Is the ballpark of half?
Right.
Okay, that's, that's pretty good.
As far as rec, recent programming enrollment goes, yeah, that's, that's not, that's not too bad.
Good, great job.
Now, what we're also going to do is, so, and I'll let the fire chief give a little bit more details on it, but for the kids that weren't able to sign up, we're going to kind of make neighborhood kind of drop-off events for, so if you see your neighbor getting the drop-off and you, for some reason, hear about it, or you were able to sign up, then there'll be different times throughout Saturdays for kids to get those similar kind of packages. And what we're going to do is use that as kind of a trial run for some routes, we're kind of moving forward with the assumption that we're not going to be able to hold the mayor's tree lighting ceremony as normal, so we're kind of playing around with some different concepts, one of those being a kind of parade-type concept for neighborhoods that we would, because we're not asking folks for sponsorship related to Autumn Fest, we would in turn reach out to those same parties and say, would you want to sponsor families as, as relates to the Crandall Cruiser, Crandall Fire Truck, so really taking that, or that was the drive that the fire department, the police department took up with those booths around town, and some of the other sponsorship that they would solicit, we would kind of be in fundraising mode from the, from the city hall perspective, like we would be for Autumn Fest, only instead of asking for, you know, three thousand dollars for our state sponsorship, or to bring whatever act for the concert, we're asking for five hundred dollars to sponsor a family, so, and, you know, you could sponsor as many families as, as, on FedEx, that's, here's the rate that, that we're asking for sponsorship, they'll be able to, to sponsor as many families they want, they'll be recognized for whenever those, those goods and groceries and clothing and gifts are delivered, you know, it'll say courtesy of, of FedEx through the Crandall Cruiser, Crandall Fire Truck, the charity drive, so we'll really try to take, all the events that we've kind of done before, and take them, and piecemeal them together with the things that we can pull off, and hopefully try and bring something that's going to be beneficial to the community as we close out the year, again, fire chief will have a little bit more information on, on that front, but yeah, those are the two events that we wanted to kind of highlight right now, and people seem to like, some of the rec, creative rec stuff that we're getting out there, so that's for...
Zach, rather than wait, I'm going to say it once more than I did the other day, I really appreciate your efforts and the CPBS group to creatively think through and come up with something that really is going to have a big impact on the community, we really appreciate that, thank you.
We appreciate that, I don't want to leave out Mike Hart, our park supervisor, who's, you know, really kind of our idea guy, and he's got contacts as far as, you know, they're not just getting a plastic bag full of goodies, it's branded with our name and our logo for the event, it's got, you know, all, it's, it's very well tailored to our community with our, it's easy to recognize the city as the driver, we're trying to break them through, he's great on the idea front, Heather, our office administrators, you know, she's, she's the one stacking, yeah, assembling those bags, and, you know, we're kind of an assembly line going into this week as we close out, but really, a team effort from the city hall perspective, but we all pass that over.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Chief Mabes?
Well, we've been busy, we have a number of, since COVID started to, we started to go back to work normal, if you will, for our new normal, early... Early summer, late spring, we've just seen our spike in a lot of drug activity. We've seen our domestic violence, which I, you mentioned before, some of those things keep going on. We talked about keeping our distance, not getting spit on. We had an officer who was maybe in the back of the room spit on three times just over the weekend. So this kind of stuff is pretty, it's, if we, an escalation. We have a number of cases of distribution, cocaine cases and things, and that's some of the stuff that we've talked about more, some PowerPoint blurs and stuff. We did have a shooting that occurred in which there was a theft interrupted and exchange of gunfire. We are, we have solved that case to some nearly a hundred percent degree, and we have some charges pending, and that's still ongoing investigation, but we, we were able to clear that up within several hours of occurring. That is not somebody that knew each other, quite frankly, so it took a lot of action. But I think there was a question posed, well, how does somebody get into Edwardville who's not from there and thinks there's links of people-to-people, which is part of our intelligence building, and working with other organizations to try to catch up to some of this stuff that's been going on. But as, over the last couple of years, I can remember, I was thinking this the other day, the first eight years, the first year I was here, we had one drive-by shooting, and then we had this low, and we didn't have very much of that kind of stuff. But that seems to be elevating not just here, but kind of across the county as well as our region, and they're seeing more and more of that. But, you know, I can't, we can't blame everything on COVID, but it's certainly a unique year. And we have seen the alcoholism type stuff driven, drugs, domestics, and we're, we're kind of seeing that, and we're, we're having a larger number of those activities as we go into the fall and now probably into the winter. What's, what's odd in our statistics, you would think cold weather, December, things slow down, it's one of our spites months, so I don't know what's, what to expect other than we're going to try to keep a handle on it and go from there. Our drug activity, you may see some postings here and there about that, it's not all of our pain idea, and he's been very effective. However, our officers are out there intercepting a lot of that kind of stuff, and we have, just in a matter of, I would say about six weeks, we had three cocaine distribution cases that were intercepted in, here in town. So we've been working on that, PCPs, the heroin, that sort of stuff that we hadn't seen in the past. So those are kind of the stats that we're seeing, we're, we're training and doing all the things that we're coming into the holiday season, so lock your cars, keep your packages hidden away, that sort of thing, so we'll just keep moving forward.
Thank you. Chief, uh, Chief Widds, sorry.
Well, as Zach already alluded to a little bit, Halloween, or Neighborhood Hunt, which is Friday night, Public Safety is going to amp up and distribute those bags and monster kits. Last year, and the year before kind of dawned on me, we have pretty much just attendance at the Santa Claus Christmas tree lighting, is, is the mobile one. So I was bouncing around the idea in my head, taking Santa Claus to the neighborhoods in December, so everybody got the chance to. Then this crazy year, we call it twenty-twenty, which has screwed up everything. We came to truck or treat, not everybody got signed up. I need fifteen thousand pieces of candy, and everybody's invited to show up at the firehouse at eleven forty-five Saturday morning for the spooky express. That is going to be the precursor for how we're going to move Santa Claus parade in December. Now, he is in this room, whether he likes the idea or not, he will be there to bring joy to all the kids' faces in December with that. But one is leading into the other, so I know that some council members have asked me, what can we do, what can we do, what can we do? We're taking our pumper, we're going to decorate it, because it is not only Halloween is a full moon weekend, and we have real-world emergencies. We're taking a second truck out to support, the police officer will be out with us in the on-duty group, so real world doesn't erupt, kids still get candy. And then, like I said, not knowing the status of people, allowing trick-or-treating going on in the subdivisions, we're heading all the subdivisions Saturday between noon for Michael Hattler, and then, like I said, about a week or two before Christmas, we were getting Santa Claus out for the same process. Zach will talk a little bit more about trying to find alternatives for Krampus Cruiser. You know, we've worked out prices, we're going in that fundraising mode, figuring that out, do that this entire next month. The easy part is the shopping aspect to it. I know we've already got one company committed to at least one family before me and Zach even had a chance to talk. What we are allowing the companies to do is they either donate the money and say we want to take care of X amount of families, or we will give them the family's information, sizes and all that, then let their employees to go do it, and then we will still take care of the river net, ground and all that, through this Johnson School, and then, as Zach said, every one of those gift packages will have a card who sponsored that family, whether it's a FedEx card, Monasium, Glazer Sprouts, Edwardville Liquors, whatever it comes out to be, they'll be making sure that they're recognized with that. And then finally, yeah, just spooky express Saturday, eleven forty-five, next door, bring you a costume if you want to go out there. Like I said, with the full moon weekend, as the chief of police has already alluded, we're going to have real worlds want to interrupt everything, so this is a backup to make sure that real world doesn't stop that, and then, like I said, just a precursor for the hobo express in December.
So Chief, one city I used to work for, we were to do, we put Sam on the front of the fire truck. So are we going to put Ben on the front of the fire truck?
We'll, we take, we take much of the same. However, we are looking at that Santa is going to be going by sleigh.
Oh.
All right. Probably courtesy of a pickup truck with a trailer, and a space heater right there, so we'll do, unnamed Santa Claus.
Sorry.
But we will be out approaching him for some smaller donations for candy canes. However, me and Mike Martin and Zach have earned those, we need about fifteen thousand pieces of the full office spooky express Saturday.
Mike, can you bring it?
I, I, I don't think we can thank you guys, the Public Safety enough, and as well as the rest that are participating in the community outreach programs, I really do appreciate all your hard work. Thank you very much. Hey, Justin?
The guys have been working really hard, passionate, doing some things. Unfortunately, it's not real exciting, so I don't have a lot to report on, but I do want to just shout out James and Kevin for putting in some hard work. The new guy, Kevin, he's been shoveling a lot of asphalt, just for work, so I just wanted to shout out to those two guys, especially James.
Thank you. You see, you have him. All right, Mark, I'm going to start with you.
Me?
Yes.
Oh, I thought you said Mark.
No, Mark.
Sorry about that, I can't, I'm really talking for them. I want to say again, like the mayor said, thank you all so much for volunteering, helping. Might be a madhouse, but those kids are going to, you know how every kid's so excited for Halloween, and they get their costume on to go trick-or-treating, but to have that fire truck that just pulled up, you might be setting a new standard, so, I don't know. No, I, I think with the world and what's going on this year, and some parents feel different about taking their kids trick-or-treating, I think a lot of people in Williams and Farms, I know we're all going to try to make it happen, so that'll be an extra additive.
I would say Widdow House has got about a hundred of kids, so.
We're just going to have a table set up at the end of our drive, we're not, he and I are there.
There's a lot of them that have talked about they're not bringing their kids out, but word got out on this, and a lot of people.
There will be a lot of kids out there, so, absolutely. And Mike, want to thank you and all the staff, everybody, for the CARES Act, and that's a lot of work, with everything else going on. It's a lot of work trying to budget all of that, so. And I want to make one more comment about changing the times for the meetings in January. If it doesn't work out, it doesn't work out. I guess we'll, with our feedback, with comments, I think it might work out good, I don't know. Maybe we'll have to cap it off at nine o'clock by four.
I like that.
We went home, he hammered, we left.
That's in, that's in one minute, so.
That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. Second one, back to you.
With the CARES Act dollars, and you were talking about the forty thousand, I think, and got cut in half to twenty is what you're saying, so is there any council input on that? I mean, since the.
How to reallocate those dollars?
Not, no, 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 not how to reallocate, but the upgrades that are going to happen, since that affects how we do our job, and wear TVs, or what's, what's the input on, from our side, how that will look?
Well, we, we may have been trying to use third-party experts to help with, I mean, we know what our setup is in here, that, that was the primary on, on those kind of things. I mean, I, we found our speakers are off, they, but it's having microphones connections and proper camera connections and those kind of things, so we've been doing it mainly working with people that do this for a living, I guess.
Well, we had talked, I know at one time about, I mean, it's very easy for people that are on that side of the room to see this over here, and, and for people that are sitting in the audience that are, where Zach is sitting, or on that side of the room can't see that. So I don't know.
And those are exactly kind of like, and, and Zach's been more direct with, but like here, so it's, it's one TV mounted, so it's at an angle more towards the council, and there's a note, and I say a TV, because that's that kind of screen, you know, big screen, and the other one is facing, so the audience, it's a whole, so, those are kind, I mean, I guess we've taken, the comments have been in the past, I mean, we even thought, what about if they were sitting in the middle here, but the problem is, is the rings of small liquid block.
Well, it, it seems natural to me that there's a TV where our clock is.
Right.
I mean, that air, that area, and maybe it's moved up a little, I don't know, but that lets everyone that's up here see that area, and I, everybody that's in the audience, I don't know if, I mean, I, I don't know.
So just, real quick, generally, the concept that we've talked about has involved two monitors, one being kind of right here on an arm that could tilt, and then one either behind where you're sitting, or one right here that faces this, but again, we, we.
Well, what does that do for us to be able to see there?
To see this right here? That monitor would be able to, to, on an arm that could tilt out, so you're not looking flat against the wall.
Personally, I don't like that. I think it's intruding to our room, invasive into the room, you know, I'd like, rather like to see, and that's why I was getting at with this input from us, I mean, we're sitting here that we're, not that we're the experts, but we definitely have input on what is user-friendly for us.
And that was discussed too, as far as your, the council's visibility, and we kind of talked about that, I think the primary, you know, issue to overcome is how big does that monitor be for someone on this side of the room to be able to see it clearly? So it, nothing's set in stone, but two monitors at least has been kind of the basis of what we've been working with.
Seems to me the front and back, you know, makes the most sense. People that are here are looking that way, people that are out there are looking straight in.
And we may be able to take, not to belate the point, we may be able to take a different approach in that, one of the things in our remote access is the issuance of tablets for the council. So you may not have to do it on a grand scale, we could stream it right to where your, your tablet is. So that would be, so you would be looking at it right here, and you could poke, you know, you could look around, but we may not have to have those grand-scale things, if that would work, though of course you want the audience, and you're right, you know, this is hard to see from certain angles, but that may be something.
Well, and we have said that for some time about eliminating the paper anyway. You know, we did that with the financials that we can go online, which I do, and I still, and I still look at and go over, but if we're able to limit that on a monitor.
And that's part of the thing, right?
We eliminate, eliminate these packets also.
So one of the things with tablets, so different tablets or laptops or whatever, I mean, generally speaking, y'all aren't doing data manipulations and working like.
Yeah, all we're doing is viewing anyway.
But, but the tablet, like, so if we had to go to full remote, you know, right, and one of the problems, I think, you know, was everybody had different technologies, had different stuff, it's like, I can't get this to work, I have a camera, I don't have a camera, and all of that stuff will be uniform. And so you're a council member, you will be assigned this technology, and, and so if you have to, or you're on vacation and you want to still participate in the meeting versus, and I know Mr. Adams had the, you know, you're trying to call in and listen on the phone, and it's not a very effective way, those are kind of, that's what we're trying to address with, let me say, audiovisual and, and remote connection, as well as for our staff. I mean, you know, I have access, you know, and a lot of our staff, I mean, it was never an issue, you know, right? I mean, they didn't travel, so, I mean, you know, if you're traveling, but, you know, now, I mean, your court, your court clerk still needs to cross this court, and if the buildings are closed, how do they cross this court? I mean, it doesn't just stop, so. So we're, we're looking broadly, or, you know, public works, they'll have recognized type, they'll have a recognized type of laptop, just like the police department, because we wanted to be able to have that out in the field and not beat it up as much, where I don't need that, but I'd put it in my, my bag and take it home and set it back up, it's easier, so. But the input, I mean, if, if there is any input, I certainly take it, I understand what you're saying. I, we did talk about that, and one of the concerns was size and visibility of it, to make sure it's clear enough for you to be able to see or read that, you know? I think I could, but, I mean, that was one of the things they talked about, was how far away and how big you live, and I guess it's kind of like signs, you know, it's like how big you make a sign on a highway, but we're not moving.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, when you had the, the screen up there with the, with the CARES Act stuff, I couldn't read any of it.
You couldn't?
No. My eyesight's not that good.
Yeah. I didn't even know you were here.
So, yeah.
And so one of the back of the room is not going to help me, I'm, I'm looking, I'm kind of go along with that tablet thing.
Well, that, all I'm saying is that some of the, you know, the, our input may help just, where, and then, and I think it's important for the input from the people that are sitting on that side of the room also, citizens, I mean, you know, to our staff, to people, so that they can say, man, you know what, I hate that thing over there, or actually, like, I twisted my neck, I can't see it, whatever, but I think more input we have on helps us make a better educated decision on what we're doing. The, the grubbing that was to begin on one hundred and tenth for the River View project.
Or after the turn, do you have an update?
I know that it was, I thought, to, to begin last Monday.
Yeah, Kitty's been fighting with them over the bond, they're having trouble getting the bond set up properly, it's just a, it's a matter of getting the right.
Bond, but I think we got it all solved today.
Yeah, she, I know she was working with them, I haven't heard on the last minute, but, so otherwise, I think, as soon as that bond thing's cleared up, we'll permit them to build a role, so.
Okay. And then also there at one hundred and third in River View, where you had came out where we had that culvert failure, what has happened, what is happening now?
We're still working on permanent drainage units, one of the property owners lives in London, that's kind of been a restriction to us trying to get those drainage units set up, so that's kind of where our holdup has been.
I think we're, he needs, he's got, so both property owners are willing to get drainage units, because he's in London, and getting, getting it so it can get notarized to get filed at the county, you got to have the right. And they're like, yeah, that's not a problem, just make sure it's on the right form, and nobody runs and knows and tell me, so what is that? I mean, I can't use the one we typically use, because it says, you know, State of Kansas County, Wyandotte, and I don't know that, and I don't know if I can replace it, say, Country of England, City of England.
So once that happens, once that gets, then is it, are we set to move forward?
Yeah, we have the preliminary plans designed for it already, so then we would put it to bid at that point. And I have been in contact with the gentleman from London, and he said that there's notaries everywhere there.
Yeah, they give a notarizing.
So then, so let me ask you this, can we be proactive on that and go ahead and get our preliminary bids out there so that when those paperwork comes back in, we're not held up, and we go, we had to wait on A to start on B?
We can say.
We got to be in place and let's go?
I think we're real close on it, though.
Yeah, I would go ahead and bid for them.
And on Ninety-Eighth Street, under the bridges there, they did come out and put up a steel plate ahead sign, and put a couple cones back to the south. Over the weekend, those cones have disappeared, so I.
I can tell you that the UG owners do more than that.
They didn't.
They, they told them that they needed to reset those plates and they needed to put a proper.
They didn't.
They did not.
No, did not.
I'm saying the UG directed the contractor to do those things, but I'll follow up.
You mean do additional than what the.
Right, yes. That they didn't do what they.
Well, they moved a mini, mini hoe, mini track hoe up there.
Yeah.
And put a steel plate, a steel plate, a head sign is what that was done. And put a couple cones in the middle of 98th Street and those cones are gone now.
So that's not what the UG project manager corrected the contractor with.
Well, so like they already talked to again. You addressed the road closure at Village South. That's what I was going to do. And whenever I said that about littering being a crime. So I drive, and I was kind of being, the reason I said that is, I go up through there just about every single morning, just to, just to drive through and check things out and see what things are going and how things are going. And people will go in there for lunch, or they'll go in there for breakfast. I see it pretty regularly. And they'll, the next thing you know, their McDonald's trash, their breakfast. This morning, I picked up the breakfast trash that was there. And so I think that, you know, most of the people that go up there are just taking a break, using their phone, catching up on emails or whatever. But we just don't need that to turn into a, you know, people just want to dump that trash all the time. So I think that the road closure, there's a place to turn around there until that project moves ahead. I think that's the best thing to do.
We basically take a road closure permit that was issued to the contractor. So theirs had a couple extra things because there was going to be active road and, and made that work for us. And we're going to, I think, I think our best bet was decided is to acquire the type two barricades and the additional signs. And then we'll just, you know, you could take them apart and reuse them. And probably could use more type two barricades.
And the last thing I'll say about moving the starting time to for the meeting until six o'clock is I have heard people say that they run long. It is sometimes a reason that they do not come down to the meeting. They don't want to go home to it. Some people were, they don't want to go home to a dark house or be able to go home that late. So I don't know if an hour will make that much of a difference, but that hasn't been a comment. That's all I have.
Eric?
Hi, Marvin.
Carol?
Mike, have we heard anything back from the trains or the federal department?
I did not hear anything from FRA. I did get follow-up from the unit that said the railroad person that they, in the proof of the pudding, that they will, they know the problem and they're going to have a system where when they break those trains, they don't need, like, right, they take it off. Their, their, I'll say excuse, that's the best I can do, was that the last time they picked up more train cars than they, you know, thought. And when they got there, they had too many. And, you know, that's why it's hard to cross the tracks now. It's a little, you know, that's, that's important. I don't care, I don't care with the reason that you can't close these three doors.
That's one.
They're fully wearing. I think the letter to the, I have heard directed back the FRA administrator, but it was pretty darn quick after that. And a couple of council members also reported to other people. So I think it got their attention, which was my intention. So I think we have some solutions.
Will you let us know if we have continuing problems with the, have we had anyone to be issued community service or litter pickup order?
I don't really, I mean, I don't know. I'll hold it with the judge. I mean, I don't get.
Well, we're not public works or police or something.
Yeah, I don't think anybody's called to set up anything. Yes, that's the mechanism that you're supposed to get in court, they have to make the work. And then they set up, they're called to set up their work.
Wasn't there, was there one that elected to do it, but then we never heard back? I thought there was something too.
I'm not sure.
But we, his body was prepared to.
Oh, was it? Okay.
I think, maybe I'm wrong.
Let us follow up and we'll just send a report out.
That'd be great.
Yeah.
Um, I was thinking about anything else. The last thing that I've got is, and I think Zach put it in the hotspot that came out, is November 14th will be our first event, the Harvesters in Edwardsville. And we're planning a food distribution event that if anyone on the council or, or anyone here is interested, we'll be, hopefully it's a lot of community involvement and volunteers to pass out groceries and benefit our community in that way. So if you want to save the date, you're marking on the calendar. If you're available, it'll be a morning event, so it won't take the entire day. We're still getting some, the 14th, which is the second Saturday in November. Still have some details coming along, but we at least have a date set, so I'm really excited.
Are you telling me that?
That's one of the details that we're still getting worked out because we're looking at a few possibilities with Harvesters. And then from those possibilities, we're going to talk with the city and make sure that it works best for everybody.
Thank you. Chuck?
I did see some UG trash bags sitting up on 110th, the white bags with their logo on it.
Some for the, that adopt a spot?
One was on 110th, just south of the bridge. There was like three or four white bags sitting by a pole, and there were a couple single bags sitting there.
Don't tell me they're go for them. I'm sure I've seen them.
Well, there was a company. So we have that adopt a spot program, and that actually was adopted by an engineering company. Cause I saw it was like, somebody, why'd they adopt that spot? And it was nobody, I, I don't, it's a known engineer guy, I just don't remember who it was. But that was a year ago. So I mean, I'll follow up.
But it was, it was white UG bags.
Okay. That probably their.
They were gone when I came here tonight.
All right. Would you look at the back of this, this thing's broken?
While we would, we would really like to have more participation from the county on the fiber. I am really glad that, that the county is being proactive and bringing some value to Edwardsville, that they're investing in our city. I think we're making strides. We're making some good steps forward. So I do appreciate them being, and any efforts we have on our side that is encouraging them to do so. I appreciate that. And I do want to recognize it because we certainly recognize their failings. I also want to recognize some of the partnerships that they're, seems to be hands reaching both ways, which is, which is kind of a nice feeling to have. And so I do appreciate that. That's all I have.
Keith, I, I just want to add one thing. I know, I know we all know this, but we have, we do have an election between now and our next council meeting. It doesn't involve any members of city council, you know. But I would be remiss not to remind everybody to make sure to vote and whatever mechanism, place that may be. Sure will have an interesting world in the next year, whatever that may be.
Thank you, Mike. I have nothing further to add. You are a journey.